We are right at seven o'clock, so I will call our council meeting to order. Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum.
Here.
Councilmember Munson.
Here.
And councilmember Valento.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we'll take a second from councilmember Munson. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choosing. And let's see the sign up sheet here. Mr. Schmaltz, you're first.
Good evening, Mayor Bain, councilmembers, and Mr. Casey. My name is Steve Schmaltz. I'm with the Forest Lake Lake Association, and I live at 22736 Hayward Avenue North here in Forest Lake. And I'm filling in for Jerry Gretnor, who's our president, who cannot be here tonight. I think he dropped you a note.
Yeah.
I'm not interested in speaking now, but we have an interest in the discussion. Item number eight, the harvester. I'm hoping that you might allow me to participate in answering any questions during that discussion, or maybe providing relevant information that could be pertinent to the harvester and the needs of the lake. So I'm really asking to be part of that discussion, I guess, in terms of answering questions and comments, if that's possible.
Excellent. We're glad you're here, and thank you for being part of that discussion. Any other open forum this evening, Karen?
I do have emails. Would you like me to read those?
I'm going to read a couple of email submissions. Go ahead.
Yep. So these emails are pertaining to the Goodview Preserve Development. They were sent in this past week. The first one is from Peter Ward, resident at 6337-207th Street North. He says, "Hello, City Council and Planning Commission. Last week, I was made aware by someone in my neighborhood that the field adjacent to Sterling Oaks Two, which is located at Goodview Avenue and 207th Street North, has been sold to a developer, and they have submitted their plans to the city for developing the parcel. I am a 15-year resident, and I live in the neighborhood just to the north of the proposed development. I want to voice my opposition to any requested deviations to current zoning standards. I fully understand that it is in the developer's best interest to fit as many properties as possible into the parcel, especially considering the high house prices right now, but I would ask the board to please keep the long-term aesthetic of the city at the forefront of their decision-making. Houses that are so close together that someone can open a side window and practically touch their neighbor's house would be a permanent eyesore in our community. Thank you for your time. Peter Ward." And the second email is from resident Abby Paulson. She does not give her address. Oh, she does, sorry. I apologize. It says, "Hello, I am a current resident in the townhouse development on 207th Street North, right next to the field, and I have been reviewing the plans for the housing development and have some concerns. The proposal for the development looks very crowded and squished together, which looks horrible and isn't what the city usually follows. We are the end unit, end unit right on the property, and I think we would be affected by this. I think the city should reconsider this plan and have the builders draw up something that allows for more space or that follows the zoning requirements that are already in place. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my concern in this situation."
Very good. Thank you, Karen. Any more submissions for open forum this evening? All right. With that, we will close open forum and bring the agenda back to council. Council, for your consideration this evening is consent agenda items 6A through 6I. I will entertain a motion or any changes.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve consent agenda 6A through 6I.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose. And consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to our regular agenda this evening. First item is 7A, which is the Lakes International Language Academy Project, the 2022 Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds Engagement Letter. Patrick, are you starting us?
Yes, I'll start this. In front of you is a request to approve bond counsel for the Lakes International Language Academy Project. The school is refinancing a set of their current bonds to take advantage of better interest rates. As you all know, we are allowed to offer conduit financing to an organization such as this. We have done that in the past, and we've reviewed the documentation that we have so far. We have no objection. Conduit financing has no impact on our bond rating or our ability to issue bonds in the future, so we will recommend that you approve the engagement letter with Taft Law Firm. And I have Julie Lundgren here, who can step up and explain a little, just to give you a little background on what the refinancing is going to do.
Thank you, Patrick. And Julie, you're welcome to join us for comments if you'd like to make.
Good evening. As Mr. Casey said, I'm Julie Lundgren, and I serve as the Chief Financial Officer at Lila. Brief summary of what our plan is, we have 2014 bonds with 15.4 million left to pay, and there's 22 years left on this term. We are asking the city to be the conduit issuer once again as we refinance these bonds. Makes sense to keep the money in the community. Savings will be used to serve our students. And the same team is in place that was there in 2014 and 2019, so should be a smooth process. And even though the savings may not be as great because the interest rates are going up, we still expect to realize significant savings.
Very good. What is your timing? Maybe I missed it in the letter. Estimated timing?
We'd like to do it this spring. Be great if we could wrap it up next month.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions for Julie before she leaves the podium? All right. Thank you for being here. Patrick, anything further on this for council's consideration?
No.
All right. Council, for your consideration, is the engagement letter of the change in bond counsel. And happy to entertain any questions or a motion if council is ready.
Patrick, just for the sake of fully understanding this thing, and I know it's been done before, and for the taxpayers too, is just exactly, does this put the city of Forest Lake on any kind of a hook?
No. The state statutes allow a city to offer conduit financing to certain organizations. It does not affect, A, the city bond rating, or does it put the city on a hook for any of the payment whatsoever? It's really just a method to have local organizations take advantage of the city's ability to issue bonds, and usually at a pretty competitive rate compared to the free market.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear so that the taxpayers know what's going on there too, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, the city has no obligation to repay the bond in the case of a default or missed payment, so we're free and clear of that.
Just to expand on that one more step, I have it in mind that we also receive fees for any legal counsel review that we might have to have. Is that true as well?
No, the city has a policy that they assess a fee for conduit financing, and we will do that. I don't know the fee offhand what that is, but it's in our policy that we require a fee for going through this process. We do have a little bit of administrative over costs and review. We'll probably have Ellers or our bond counsel possibly look at this as well, so there's some small things like that, but we will charge a fee to be determined at this point.
And to offset those charges. Any other questions on this item? And then the ultimate refinancing comes before us for approval. Is that also on calendar?
Yes, we have not, we don't have the schedule yet for the bond sale or the hearing and the resolution that you have to pass. We expect Taft, who is the bond counsel, to prepare all those documents, give us the schedule, and present that to us at the time when they're ready. And as Julie said, knowing this kind of bond issue, I would guess you're looking at the last meeting in April, first meeting in May. That would be my guess for a timetable.
Very good. With that, I'm happy to motion that council approve the Lila 2022 Lease Revenue Refunding Bonds Engagement Letter.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Abstention?
Abstain.
One abstention. Motion carries. With that, we will move on to Resolution 3282202, which is the Airport Infield Drainage Improvement Grant and Plans and Specs.
Mayor members of council, here tonight to talk about the airport infield drainage improvements. This project was actually brought before the council last fall for preapproval to apply for the grant contract with MnDOT. Historically, we've always gotten one grant agreement with MnDOT Aeronautics for any work at the airport. They have changed how they are now doing their grant projects this year. So for projects that require both engineering and construction, we now have to do two grants because we can't spend any money until we have an encumbrance for that funds. So now we have to do two grant agreements, one for the engineering and the second for the construction costs. So tonight, what you have before you is for the first grant agreement for the airfield drainage or infield drainage improvements. This is for the engineering, and that grant agreement, or that grant agreement number is 1049974. Staff is recommending approval of that grant agreement, and as part of that approval, we also need Resolution 032822-02, which authorizes the mayor and city administrator to sign the grant agreement with MnDOT. So that's all MnDOT paperwork requirement. And then the second motion tonight, or the second request, would be to approve the plans and specs and authorize the advertisement for bids for the project. This then allows the airport engineer to release the bidding documents out and collect the bids on the construction side of it. And then those will come back once those are assembled for a second construction grant. So this will come back at a future meeting for the construction grant approval. So council is aware this is funded 95% by MnDOT, 5% by local share. We are fully, the airport fund is fully budgeted for this grant for '22. And this does take care of some safety needs out there at the airport. The area between the taxiway and the runway has historically, when it was redesigned, should have been dry 24 to 48 hours after a rain, and are seeing some drainage issues out there just because of the result of the clay soils. This project will rectify that situation and make it a much safer area of the airport. So staff is recommending approval of the grant agreement and authorizing plans and specs for the project. And with that, happy to answer any questions council may have regarding this item.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions on the project itself or the grant agreement?
I don't have any questions. We've been discussing this at the airport commissioner level several times, but I'd be happy to help answer questions if anybody has any.
No, no questions for me either. This one's pretty straightforward. Quick point of clarification, Dan, when you say 95% MnDOT aviation and the 5% local, the 5% local is covered by the airport fund, is that right?
Correct, yeah. The local fund, the local share does come out of the airport fund. So we do budget every year for any CIP project that we do get grant funding for, and this is the one that we got awarded this year. We typically submit three to five projects to MnDOT Aeronautics for award, and right now they're looking at taking care of safety issues, so all local funding does come from airport fund.
Yeah, to councilmember Husnick's point, this one's been discussed for a while, so nice to see it getting done. Let's take this in two separate steps, council. Is somebody ready for a motion on the resolution?
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to approve Resolution 03-28-22-02, Authorization to Execute the Minnesota Department of Transportation Grant Agreement for Airport Improvement Excluding Land Acquisition.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries for the resolution. And then the second part of action requested this evening is to authorize plans and specs. Is somebody ready for a motion on that?
Mayor Bain, I'd make a motion that we approve the scheduling for, to approve the plans and specifications and authorize advertising for bids.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. All right. We will move on to 7C, which is our Community Development Director. And Patrick?
Mayor and city council, as you recall, last October, we had long discussions regarding the need for community development director. In addition, the EDA recognized the need to have additional staff to support EDA. We, at that time, issued a job description. We went through that and justification, and the council approved the recruitment of an EDA director for Forest Lake. With that, we advertised the first time and got a number, a small number, but a number of resumes that we found not inspiring. So we re-advertised the position. This time, we advertised not only through the League of Cities, but also the National American Planning Association. The result was, we had about 10 resumes and applications filled out and returned to us. We did a first set of interviews with four candidates. There were a wide variety of candidates, two from Wisconsin area, two from Minnesota. After that, it was clear to us, very clear to us, that the successful candidate who we're recommending was far and away above the other three candidates. There was no question. We had a second interview with Abby to discuss a few very specific items, specific developments to judge the ability to understand those and suggestions. She did very well with that. So I'm requesting the council approve the hiring of Abby Jo Whitman for the Community Development Director. And Abby is in the audience with her daughter.
Very good. Thank you, Patrick. Council, any questions for Patrick this evening as we consider this hire?
The funding, again, I just, we were talking, some of this is coming from EDA and some from...
Yeah, we will probably, we haven't split exactly what that's going to be, but the EDA will pay for a portion of this, and the general fund will pay for the majority of it. And the schedule is pay grade 18 of step three of the non-union wage schedule, beginning at 57.64 an hour.
Very good. Any other questions for Patrick? This position has been sought after for a while, and so I'm happy to see it being filled. And with that, I would make the motion that council approve the position for the Community Development Director, new hire of Abby Jo Whitman, as presented by Patrick.
I'll second.
We'll take councilmember Beistrum for the second. And any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. And motion carries. Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you.
What's the start date?
I believe it's May 2nd.
Okay.
All right. That concludes the action portion of tonight's agenda. We are going to move into a discussion-only portion for a workshop topic on the weed harvester. And any discussion that we have on this weed harvester will be in workshop format only. Any official action that we need to take will come forward at a future meeting. And with that, Patrick, are you starting us?
I will start, and Dave will help me out if I screw it up too badly. This was put on for discussion more to just update the council of where we are with the weed harvester and just the relationship between the watershed district and the lake association. What we've been attempting to do even prior to last year's budget was to formalize an agreement and between all three of the parties on what's to be done and how that payment is going to be made. As the council knows, every time we've come, most of the time we've come before the budget process, we've been a little bit cloudy about what was happening, how it was going, and who paid what, and what the relationships were. The goal here is to come to a formal agreement between the three parties so that the transparency is there, so that everybody knows, not only the citizens but the council, what you're paying for, what services are rendered. I think this is a necessary step in this, so everybody's clear what we're doing. That's really where we're at. And I think the weed harvester issue is still up for debate. We have been talking between all three parties about how often it should happen, when it should happen, or even if it should happen, based on new lake ecology and things like that. So that's still in the works, but we're still working towards an agreement. We hope to get that before the beginning of the lake season starts. I think we're close. We just have to, Dave's been meeting with the association and the lake and the watershed district, and I think we're getting close. So that's where we're at with the weed harvester. And if, Dave, you want to say anything else?
Yeah, it pretty much sums it up. It's just, I think the agreement's pretty close. It's just the weed harvester itself is still something that needs to get hammered out. It's a lot of staff, a lot of money, and a lot of time, so it's still talking through between the three groups of what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, you know? I mean, with estimates, it's probably about the staff, equipment, and fuel. You're talking close to $50,000 a year, and our complete budget is $150,000 between the three groups. So a third of the costs, and that's kind of the hang-up of, you know, is it the right thing to do, or can that money be spent, why is it somewhere else? So that's kind of, I don't think that affects the agreement per se. I mean, I think the agreement can still, the dollar amounts and the percentages and what we're going to do can happen without that final decision, but definitely still need to work through that yet as a group to come up with consensus.
Dave, can you just refresh council on, you know, some of this is shared responsibility, correct? Can you just kind of bring us back to who's responsible for what, you know? You or Steve has his hands up, his hand up as well, so.
And that's the big reason why we want this agreement, because it's, money, some money goes to here, and then some goes to that, and then you offset some money to cover a different expense. So this agreement should lay it out so at the end of the year, the city, the watershed, and the lake association will know what was done and what each group spent in each section. Right now, it's some reimbursement, some, well, we're doing this, so then we won't pay you so much for that, or we're offsetting this by paying for the fuel on the harvester, or we're going to pay for the staff time for this, so then we'll... So that was the big mess, you know? So that agreement should hopefully, you put a pool together, say, you know, we're about $150,000, saying the city, the watershed, and the lake association will split that, say it's 40/40 and 20 percentage-wise, or something like that. And then at the end of the year, here's all the activities, and then here's a dollar amount spent, you know? So yes, maybe, the city may spend $30,000 on the weed harvesters, so then that gets credited back to another thing, but at the end of the day, it all equals out, and then you can, everybody can kind of have contributed to everything. If that makes sense. It's, right now, that's the cloudiness part, is nobody really knows who's spending what.
We've never had an agreement, we've never had an agreement in the past between the three entities, or how has this been, how is this changing from where we've been?
So in the past, maybe like two, three years ago, what would happen is Clear Lake would, you know, usually make a request in the spring or the fall for X amount of dollars for weed treatment or boating inspections, so we dedicate that money to them out of that budget. And then we would operate the weed harvester for the year, and then whatever that total amount came to, we basically discharged back labor. And then the remaining, we'd get a request from Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, basically in an invoice saying, "We spent X amount of dollars on curly leaf. We spent this much on boat inspections. We spent this much on Eurasian. Would the city like to donate for this cause or to contribute?" And then we just take the remaining fund balance and then cut them a check to zero out that balance. It wasn't really an agreement, but that's kind of what happened. You know, then we just said, "Well, this is all we have left, so, you know, here's a contribution to it."
And the, so the intent, so this agreement would kind of household all of those different activities under one agreement. Weed harvester is one of those activities, right? But are there other, do you expect other items to be addressed?
Yeah, and a lot of that stuff will come between the lake association and the watershed. I mean, they're by far the experts on what you need to do, or what kind of AIS is in the lake, or what kind of treatments. I mean, that will leave more up to them and will, you know, contribute financially, you know? So really, at the end of the day, contributing financially for everything is fine, but the weed harvester kind of throws in the middle because it's a city-owned weed harvester, plus they need a city-owned truck to haul it, and then the staff has to be hired by the city to be covered under the insurance to run the truck and the harvester. So that kind of throws a wrench in the whole system, is, you know, you could say, "Well, that's fine, either watershed or lake association, go ahead and operate yourself," but that just can't happen because it's city property, and that's kind of the issue.
I see. Okay.
Typically, typically also, it's strictly city employees that are doing all, I mean, certainly as one, you're talking about the trucking portion. The weed harvester itself, that's still city employee normally, or?
Yep. So last year, the lake association wanted to kind of take it over themselves and manage it and hire staff and manage the whole project, but the city still had to hire who they selected to be the operators and the truck drivers. So we had to hire them as city employees, and then lake association reimbursed us. So last year, the lake association said, "We'll take on the costs of it and managing it." But we had to hire the people, and then they, payroll sent them an invoice at the end of the summer saying, "This is what you owe for these employees."
So beyond kind of the movement and discussions that need to happen on having three parties come to the table and agree on a new agreement, do you want to talk through kind of some of the discussion points around weed harvester? And I guess I, you know, this is timely as it's a topic of conversation, and as we're kind of going into an agreement, are there some thoughts around kind of weed harvester background information would be good for council to have?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a, this would be the last city, I believe, in the metro that would have a weed harvester on it. The last one I know about, unless Steve knows anything else, was Minnetonka, and they just sold all six of their harvesters. They just went to straight chemical treatment. Yeah, they did a survey. They had a couple hundred people that were in favorites. I mean, there's definitely some people in favorite, and then there's also some people as running the compost site that absolutely hate the weed harvester because they go out every morning, and there's, you know, 14 garbage cans of weeds on their shoreline, so, which may come from the harvester, may not, but that's what they blame it on. So some of that is hard to gauge, you know? Is it doing well, doing not? There's studies that say that if you didn't cut, would it really make a difference? I mean, when you cut, it grows back in a couple weeks, so do you, are you making any progress? Is it more of a, you know, in the past, it was a dock cleaning service is more of what it was, you know? There's a lot of people that went around and cleared out spots for boats to get out into the open water, and now we don't do that. We only, we can only cut within 150 feet ashore, you know? So that service has changed, or that what we use it for is more of, you know, just cutting in certain areas, and we have to stay away from AIS, so there's a lot of areas, if it's Eurasian watermill foil or curly leaf, we have to, you know, so that haul has to get plotted every year to make sure we don't get into those areas and start spreading the weeds around, so. And I know, I believe the watershed said, when, if we cut with the numbers that we show for yardage, we count, we cut 1/10 of 1% of all the weeds in the lake in a year. So, I mean, it's a lot of money to spend for that, so is it more of a, the harvester drives by, you figure it's doing something, or is it really doing something? And I don't, I don't use the lake, and I'm not out there, and some will say it's super beneficial, and some will say it's a waste of time. So that's the whole issue with this whole thing, is it's hard to, and, you know, there's been a suggestion of why not just not cut for a year and then see what happens? Is it, you get more complaints, less complaints? Do people see a difference? Do they not see a difference? You know, that's an argument as well, but then, you know, you get afraid, or people get afraid that, well, if you cut, then you're never going to start up again, you know? So great arguments on both sides, and that's, you know, it kind of got us off-topic on the agreement as we were talking as a group, because I think the agreement is a great agreement, but the harvester is just a... but the harvester is just a...it's a one-off that's a difficult decision, you know, so.
Is...and Steve, come on up, but I don't mean to exclude you from the conversation, so.
I have something that might be helpful.
Yeah, please.
We just got our last few grants that we won, so we've been able to put together a... what's actually going to happen next year from a cost aspect, so we're ready to see how it works. I thought that might be of interest to the board to see that.
Helpful, yes.
So I can pass it in. Do you have that on your screen?
It'll be up on their screen in a second.
Okay, I can have a couple copies here, too.
Thanks.
Can you see it on the screen?
We can see it on the screen, thanks. Although, can...do you have extra copies? I'd love to take one.
Sure.
Excellent, thank you. Might have multiple. Do you have multiple copies there?
We don't have to go through all the details on this, but I think it's, as Dave mentioned, the agreement and the harvester are two different issues, and they're related, but they're really separate to a certain extent. So what this chart shows you is the...on the left-hand side, and we're not going to go through all the details, but it shows you the lake management activity, and Myra, as you mentioned before, that there's a number of things that have to be done on the lake, and that's what's listed there. Then the next column is the estimated cost, as best we can make them for this year, and that's highly variable. It depends on what nature deals us each year. Then all the grants that are received from any party involved with this is deducted from those costs. So then you have a third column, which is estimated partner 2022 costs. And you see that it started out at $149,000, the first column. We had $36,867 in grants, so that brings it down to $112,000. And then we split that down below, as you can see, 42 and 1/2, 42 and 1/2, and 15. And I'm not sure whether that's going to be the final numbers or not, but that's what I was given. And then off to the right, then we also show what each partner spent. So estimated spend, and then what you do then, as you...as Dave mentioned before, you balance this whole thing out, and it gives a much better accountability than what we had before, and it's also going to go a lot easier. The only thing is you've got a highly variable cost here each year, so it could be higher, it could be lower. I mean, on curly leaf pond weed, we've spent as much as $110,000. Now, we've got a new chemical, and it's a lot cheaper, so that's one reason why it's down. But that number could be anywhere from $21,000 to maybe $80,000 next year. We don't know what's going to happen until the ice is off and you can see how fast it's growing. So whatever it is, it gets in there, and then you just...you split it up at the end of the year. And everybody's liability is held to $150,000, your percentage of $150,000. And what we're suggesting, if you go over that, if we go under that, and you have money set aside, you don't spend your $63,000 or whatever you have for the harvester, and it goes in a rainy day fund, so when you're over, the city and everybody else has extra money to chip in when it's going to be higher. But that's another issue we have to talk about. But I thought this clearly shows you how it works, and I think it's much better than the past system we've had. So are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them, but...
I do have a question, and I'm just trying to...there's been a lot of chatter on this topic, and so I'm just trying to make sure I'm rooted in fact. I have it in mind that the...when it comes specifically to the harvester activities, that the Comfort Lake Forest Lake considers that to be not invasive species management, but more of a recreational activity because of native vegetation, and that they aren't able to participate in those costs for weed harvester. Is that true, and is that why on the example you've got here that it's...those costs are borne entirely by the city? Is that right? So we can have a three-way agreement, but there are certain activities of that agreement that one party may not be able to participate in. Is that correct?
To a certain extent, the watershed district is not really involved in removing native weeds, native plants. So, you know, maybe we've done a small percentage here and there, maybe for a certain reason, but not an active program like this. So that cost would be actually...well, whoever expends the money on it is the one that would have the cost, and then it would be split up on the other two parties if it goes over. But this is necessary, I think, to a certain extent, because...and what we have to do is we have to come up with a plan. The homeowner's going to be responsible for clearing a path from their dock out to 150 feet to public waters. And then what we're suggesting we do is, we're not giving the whole lake a haircut, much like you with your park mowing. We're not doing that. We're picking up the dead, dead branches and the trees that fall down in the park and the stuff like that that occurs when you have selected nuisance native weeds in a certain part of the lake. Some of your bays, you can't get into during certain years. A third launch on Lake Three, DNR, when that's growing heavy in that bay, it's hard for people to get their boat out to deep water. So if you can cut a path, a 15-foot path in there, it helps. You don't have to cut the whole bay. We don't want to do that, because these are native plants, and you don't want to destroy them, just like you control AIS. You want the AIS to take over the native plants, and that's why you get rid of them. So there are needs for this in certain areas, but I think it can be better managed, and if we have it with one person, with one crew doing it on a regular basis, and we determine where it should be cut, and it's going to change from year to year depending on what happens with the growth of the vegetation, I think we can have a more efficient and effective program. It is a big job. I'll agree with David. I mean, Jerry did this last year, and he...it was a full-time job. That's a fact, so it was tough. Does that answer your question?
That does answer my question, yes. And so it sounds like, from a lake association perspective, you would very much be advocating that we continue the harvester?
We would like to get out of the harvesting business, but, you know, I think maybe we try it in a more sophisticated way, with better planning, and say, "Oh, it works for a year or so, and then see what happens." But there's no doubt that we've had, like, six years ago, in the fall, when you have a certain type of weather, you'll get these big weed bollings that actually blow into shore. And I've seen them that one year, a football field wide...long and 200 feet wide. And there's no way people could even get their boats off the lake because they couldn't get through that. So we had the harvester not cut that, but just pick all that up and clear it out so people can get their boats out for the winter. You know, when you have a situation like that, you've got to be able to respond. And now with the lake being clearer, it's two feet clearer than it was three years ago. And that's a combination of the work the watershed's doing, plus zebra mussels have helped. So now our weed line is down probably around eight or nine feet as opposed to six. So now we've got more vegetation, growing thicker because the water's clear, and growing deeper.
Yeah.
That's the price you have to pay for clear water, but it's a trade-off.
Yeah.
Other questions for either Steve, or Dave, or Patrick?
Just a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure anybody can answer this question, but I'd be curious to know other communities that have given up this program, you know, have they just replaced it with chemical treatment and had as much, if not more, success, right? In keeping the lake free of weeds. You know, you talk about Minnetoka giving up their harvesters. The people are doing it for a reason, I would say probably. I'm just not quite sure what kind of success they're realizing.
I can comment on that, because I'm familiar with that situation over there. The difference there is that they were...they're actually treating and removing Eurasian water milfoil, which is an invasive species. And that actually blankets the lake where you can't get your boats through it. In fact, fish can't even swim through it. It's so thick. So instead of using harvesters to ruin that, they're using chemicals to do it. In our situation, we're trying to remove limited amounts of the natural plants, and the DNR will not approve killing natural plants with chemicals. So that's not an option we have. We can do it for AIS, but you cannot do it for native species. Unless, of course, within 150 feet of shoreline, the shoreline owner can have...cut a path 15 feet wide or cut a swimming area 50 by 50 on their property. And the DNR will approve that with a certified contractor that applies the Aquaside to kill the natural plants in many cases then. But only a limited amount. They're very well, very tight on that restriction, so. In fact, we're restricted on how much we can actually kill of AIS. It's got to be less than 15% of the littoral area, which means it can be up to maybe 180 acres, if I recall correctly.
Sounds like a complex issue.
Well, it's very difficult.
The comment I was going to make is that our lake is really important to lots of people, especially to the city itself, but it sounds to me like the harvester would be more useful on kind of a part-time basis or as needed rather than a full-time situation, I guess. I don't know. Trying to get that straightened out in my mind here. And it sounds to me like spending money on these chemical applications seems like the way to go, especially for the invasive species. That's the only one we can use it for, but...
We're doing that now.
We need to handle that, too, but, boy.
That was brought up in one of our meetings with the watershed and the lake association of, "What if you scaled it back?" And I think actually the watershed brought it up and said, you know, "What if you, you know, went and cut Landing Three and cut in between the channels, and then cut all the places like Steve said where you couldn't get into bays? If you had those selected areas more for navigation, you know, and that was a service you provided to get people onto the lake if you found those areas?" And then he said, you know, "Maybe it's...you're out there once a week, or twice a week, or once every two weeks, depending on how that weed growth is." You know, that was thrown out there as an option that maybe that's your win-win, is you still let the boats navigate around, you cut back your cutting, but then you're kind of doing some of the same.
This big weed ball that Steve was talking about, I mean, how else would you handle it?
No, that's only occurred like six years ago, but it can occur in any fall. You never know when it's going to happen.
Yeah, it's certainly a possibility, I suppose. It depends on weather and water depth and drought and all the other things that go with it.
And I guess that's where I was going, you know, although I didn't articulate it very well, is a more targeted approach.
Right.
You know, better than just sort of this blanket, you know, "Let's go here today and here tomorrow," you know? Really kind of map it out and have a more targeted approach.
That's what we have to try, and the big issue has been in the past that many of the shoreline owners feel that this is their own personal service, and we're supposed to come up and cut to their dock. We're not...we should not do that. We get clear communication that it's their responsibility to get that path out. And then maybe we cut a path along the shoreline, parallel to it, with a couple ribs going out to deep water, like a little road, and you maintain that for that area for that year. The next year, it might be on the other side of the lake. You don't know. It depends how the weeds grow, but I think Dave's right. We've got to have a more targeted approach to this whole thing. We're just not out there cutting lawn every afternoon. That's just a waste of time.
Exactly what's happening, Dave. I mean, are you getting together with these folks to try to get this all hammered out?
Well, and I think that's what did work better last year, is when the lake association managed it, and, you know, maybe the operator part is whatever, but we're not out on the lake. You know, Jerry is out on the lake, and his members are on the lake. They know where the weeds are high. You know, we would...when we would cut, we would just follow zones, you know, like we had our approved permit from the DNR, and we'd just go to Zone One, Zone Two, and just cut around the lake with just no...in sequence. I think Jerry did a better job of that last year, because he was out there, and he knew, "Okay, why don't you send the harvester over here to cut?" The problem is, is he kind of kindly turned back that job because it was a lot of work, and, you know, and that's kind of the issue now is, you know, they're the main proponent for it, but they don't want to manage...really manage it, and we're going to pay for all of it. So it's kind of the issue as well.
There's got to be some coordination between you folks and the truck...with the trucking and the weed harvester and everything else, too. So how much leeway does there have to be, you know?
And I don't know. I mean, the question, too, is, you know, it's always been a city service, but is it really a city service? Just back in the old days, people used to plow people's driveways as they were doing the main roads, and you just quit doing that at a point in time because they realized that wasn't a function of the city. You know, is cutting weeds a function of the city, or is it a function of the watershed, or is it a function of the lake association? I don't...I don't know.
I think the lake's beneficial to the city of Forest Lake, and I think we have to be conscious of that particular thing, and if whatever we can do to help, I think we need to be doing that. But if there's coordination that works better with the watershed district or the lake association, fine. I think you're right about that, because you have that coordination. You have people that are out there that in the know what's going on. But I think the city of Forest Lake has some obligation to help out, because it's our namesake. You know, that's all there is to it, so.
Yeah, it's enough of a recreation.
Well, the lake brings in a lot of taxes, you know? Just for example, if lake shore is $3,500 a foot, for every 100 feet, that's $350,000 of taxable revenue for the city. And if you take the house and the lot away, that $350,000 is there just because of the shoreline, not because of the lot and not because of the size of the house. So now you multiply that times the number of miles that we've got around the shoreline, and you take that against your levy, and you know how much bring that... in 2010, it was over $800,000. And of that, we know the lake association has been trying to get our $63,000, which has been assigned to this, up to $75,000 last year, which was turned down. And so, you know, that's a pretty small amount of what's totally raised that's being put back into the lake. But we're just happy to get that, though, too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the question of, "Is this the function of the city?" And I go back to, yes, I think it is a function of the city, and part of that is because if it's not us, who else is it? Now, I think we should always continue to challenge, "Is it effective, and is it the best approach?" Let's keep that on the table. But to the extent that we do think it is effective and it is the best approach, if the watershed district, if it is, you know, if they're not able to provide it or can't provide it, I can appreciate that the lake association isn't able to do it entirely on their own, and I think that's part of where the city should be a partner to that. And so I strongly support our participation in the agreement and think that, you know, we need to have a strong seat at that table, because it's going to take all of us. I appreciate the, you know, the lake association and the homeowners that are on the lake have skin in the game, and the watershed district has skin in the game, and I think the city needs to continue. And, you know, I think in absence of a strong reason why the harvester is not effective, I'd like to see it continue for this next year. But, you know, information changes and treatment, you know, philosophies change, and what's available changes, and so I think we have to kind of keep evaluating, how does the harvester fit within the overall plan? And then I know this...coming to a three-way agreement is really challenging, but I appreciate that we're getting to this spot, because you can even just see on the spreadsheet, there's a lot of complexity here and a lot of activity, and to have the transparency of who's doing what, I think is a good outcome that's worth some of the pain and kind of just what it takes to negotiate a three-way agreement.
Well, I think it's a much better organized and it's a much more responsible way to track our money. So I think that's what everybody was trying to get at, and we certainly support that. Okay, thank you.
So I know there's some additional conversation certainly to be had to bring this to a close. I think I wanted to get this on the agenda to, you know, kind of provide counsel with some insight into directionally where this is headed and to see if there's any other points of...points that wanted to be made or things you'd like to see included, but for now, I think this conversation has been good. Any other questions or topics we would like to cover on this particular item? Dave, Patrick, do you have what you need to kind of move...keep moving the discussion ahead?
Yeah, we'll continue to try to get an agreement in place.
Okay. Excellent. All right. With closing out that topic, let's move on to staff updates, and let's start with Karen, and we'll just kind of go around the two tables here.
Thank you for being here. I don't have any updates.
Thank you for being here this evening. Okay, go ahead, Karen.
No updates, just a reminder that the Board of Appeals meeting is on April 11th, and the EDA meeting will be canceled prior to that.
What time is it? Board of Appeals, 5:00?
It's at 5:30, upstairs in the community room.
Just a quick note on the Board of Appeals meeting. I know there's been a fair amount of kind of chatter on Board of Appeals, and it's property tax statement time, and there's been some surprises out there. It's a...there's a lot of activity happening with property values. The county website has a lot of great information, both on just property tax values in Forest Lake, property tax values in Washington County, as well as what to expect in that Board of Appeals meeting. And so looking for information on that website is, I think, folks would find that quite helpful. There's a lot of great tools out there.
You know, the thing I'd like to say about that is, you look what's been driving that situation when people are getting $40,000, $50,000 more than what they're asking for their house, and that's what drives all this. So I hope everybody can kind of understand what's going on here, so...but it is a shocker, no doubt about it.
Dan?
Mayors of the council, the next downtown committee meeting will be on April 18th. The workshop...the council workshop will be replaced by the downtown... eighteenth, the workshop, the council workshop will, will be replaced by the downtown, um, planning meeting, uh, the planner will be in, and we'll start talking about the executables, which is the next level down from the directives that we did at the last meeting. Um, EDA, council, and downtown committee will all be in attendance at that meeting. And then on May fifth, I'll be speaking at the land development summit as part of the real estate, um, Real Estate Journal's, um, uh, conference schedule, so I'll be there discussing, uh, land development in the city of Forest Lake to a bunch of real estate developers, so that is on May fifth, and that's what I have.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. Amanda, always good to see you.
Uh, nothing for legal, thank you.
All right, thank you. Patrick.
Uh, no, I'd just like to thank the council for approving the community development director, and inform the council I'll be out of the office from April fourth through the eighteenth.
Dave.
Uh, one quick update, the compost site would open this weekend, a year ago, but it, with the cold weather and the mud, and they're still chipping up, it's going to be at least one more week, and I can't really figure anybody's really assembling much right now, so we're hoping next week, the ninth, but most likely the sixteenth, that weekend. Dan, updated the website, website to be, to be determined, and we'll send out a Facebook post once, once we know that exact date, but it's just a mud bog out there, so we just don't want people getting stuck and making a mess, so, that's all I have.
Thanks, Dave. Ryan.
Mayor, City Council, no updates, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Nothing for Ryan, all right, Chief Newman.
Mayor and City Council, no updates for fire.
All right, and Kevin.
Uh, Mayor and City Council, no updates from finance.
All right, excellent. And let's, um, move on to council updates, and we'll start with Councilmember Munson.
Yep, just a couple pieces of information, I know there was a couple emails tonight about the Good, Good View project, and just wanted to let you know that nothing's been approved yet, it was just the concept plan review, so there's time to, um, more time to come on that for comments and planning, and, um, to also let you know that they've been discussing the MXR one, um, and it sounds like we've kind of, kind of come full circle back to the beginning, so, um, and I believe they're going to request a joint meeting, just to sort of refresh everyone on where things are, and, um, some things that they've learned, and then, um, at the end of the meeting, there was a lot of discussion about enforcement of code, and I did share that we've talked about that, we've talked about, um, it's not the best use of police time, that's not necessarily what we want them to do, nor is it really the message we want to send, um, and then that, you know, if that's something that the folks feel very strongly about, then we, we need to find a way to pay for that, because that's not, um, something that we've been able to do, and I think there was some frustration, but, you know, at the time, I didn't think to, to say this during the meeting, but we've been taking care of everything that's been kicked down, the can's been kicked down the road, and so there's only so much we've been able to do every year with what we've had, and that's the one thing that unfortunately keeps dropping, because there's other things that we need, so, there could be some more information from them around that.
Thank you. Councilmember Beestrom.
I attended the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission meeting, uh, last week, they also reviewed the, um, Good View Preserve Concept Plan and the Bertaud Estates Preliminary Plaid in the context of, of Parkland Dedication. Um, there's some exciting possibilities there with a contiguous park between the two development pieces, so, you know, what would normally be in the, in the three-acre range will be in the six-acre range, and, um, opens the door to some kind of really cool possibilities, and many of the commission members were excited about that. Um, uh, approved the agreement with the Forest Lake YMCA for their park playdays again, so those are coming back this year, always popular at Belts Park. Um, the Minnesota DNR grant application should be completed this week, um, I know Jamie had a full week this week, it sounded like, um, and then just some discussion around the parking agreement with St. Peter's Church, um, park dedication ordinance and fees, and then the Washington County ship grant, uh, for the master plan updates, uh, that was received. Um, and then I also attended the YMCA, uh, board meeting, and they're hiring, uh, summer staff, as many are, and they also have a, um, a sneaker campaign going right now, um, we're supposed to spread the word about, they're, um, taking in gently-used sneakers in a collection box at the Y, and the Y then receives a dollar for every pair of shoes donated, so, and it adds up quickly. So if anybody has, um, gently-used sneakers, drop them off. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Husnick.
Thank you, Mayor Bean. Uh, I attended the EDA meeting prior to the council meeting this, this evening, and, uh, lots of updates from Ryan on that, on the housing units coming out in the near, near future, and so it's going to be a really busy, uh, time coming up here, so.
Yeah.
Three hundred and some units, when I added up here, and, and I'll let you continue with that, Myron, some of the other things we talked about there, and the city development update and so forth. And then I also, um, attended the Vietnam Veterans Program that occurred yesterday at the Legion, and I just wanted to say a huge thank you to Diane Fineman, she's, uh, driving force of this thing, and, um, there was about at least three hundred people that showed up for that, and, uh, the, this year, the theme was about, um, medical care that people receive in battle, and right afterward, and that kind of thing, and there was a couple nurses there, and they had a helicopter on display there, and all kinds of different things, so it was, um, really good program, so that's all I have for now, thank you.
Councilmember Valento.
Um, I attended the Forest Lake Lake Association ice cleanup, it was a very chilly day.
Yes.
Definitely was not dressed appropriately.
At least you weren't in it.
What?
At least you weren't in it.
Yeah. Um, we did find some garbage, uh, and I, um, recruited my mom, and so kind of forced her to go, we got her steps, and, um, so it was, it was a good day, for sure, yeah.
Excellent. Uh, just a couple quick updates from me, um, I attended the EDA meeting right before this, um, and one of the things that the EDA did approve was an expansion of scope to the downtown plan, to add an addendum to allow for a deeper study, and some more specific details to be built out around the southeast portion of the downtown roundabout, on that block that we, um, would expect to develop sooner rather than later, and, um, the agreement allows for, again, kind of a, a deeper connection between that particular parcel, and what is going to be included in the broader plan, and so that was approved, and will be delivered, um, as part of the overall delivery of items for the downtown plan. Um, and Councilmember Husnick, I think, covered the other items we talked about at the EDA today, um, and then also just a quick, uh, thank you for coverage in my absence, um, last week, so. And with that, we are at the end of our planned agenda for tonight.
Mayor Bean, I, I just wanted to, um, say a quick thank you to Dave and Public Works for the shack at the compost site, thanks for making that happen, appreciate that. I've heard, I've already heard about it from many members of the community, thank you, because they, they don't want to see those folks down there sitting in the sun all summer